Before we lead into our prayer, I do want to make an announcement for those who have never participated in either a public hearing or wishing to speak on an item. I can tell by the crowd today, we've got a couple of items on here that are of real interest. Individuals can participate two ways. They can fill out the participation form, which allow you to either speak at the beginning of the meeting or at the time of the actual item. Today, we have a public hearing that allows for anyone to speak without filling out this form. And in both cases, you will have three minutes during that time. So that way, it kind of lays out the groundwork. So I have three today so far that have been presented, but during public hearing, anyone can speak that wishes to come forward. All right. Well, as usual, our custom is we start off with prayer. And today, we have with us Brother Dan Rogers, who will lead us in that invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Would you bow with me, please? Father, we come before you this morning, and we are thankful and blessed, blessed in so many different ways. We thank you, Father, for the resources of our state. We thank you for the resources, the natural resources you've given here to our county. But Father, we also are mindful of all those human resources that we have here who work among us and for us. I pray especially, Father, for the commissioners today, and I pray for their wisdom. I pray for peace and conversation, and I pray that you will help us come to good conclusions that will benefit all of the citizens of this county and especially this community. Father, we ask that you will continue to bless us and let us know how much you love us, for it's in your son's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Rogers, thank you. If you would, please remove your hats in the courtroom, please. Thank you. The time is 9:02. We do have a quorum. We will call this meeting in Commissioners' Court to order. And as mentioned earlier, we have three citizens' comments, or three individuals that have put forward to speak. And we, first one who is asked to speak at the beginning of court is a Valerie Baum. Ms. Baum, if you would, please come forward to the podium. And if you would, give your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Valerie Baum, and I'm at 900 County Road 2100 in Seven Points, Texas. And I just had a couple of questions with regards to the new regulations that you're putting in in zoning and plating. And I'm wondering what kind of road restrictions and what kind of road frontage you're going to require for replating on county roads and on farm-to-market roads? That's it? I didn't see anything in the 82 pages about that. Okay, that's it?
Thank you, ma'am. The other two individuals are requesting to speak at the time of which the subdivision public hearing is going to take place. So at this time, we will move on to item one, which is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court held on October 1, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, if you would, please silence your phones. If there's no questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes of the previous Commissioners' Court meeting held October 1, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the minutes of October 1, 2024, as presented. All of those in favor? Oppose, abstain? We have four, four, and one abstention. Commissioner Toole. Item number two is consider and take action on an amendment to OpenGov Financial's contract for software support services. Ms. Baum.
It's not an amendment. We're getting priority there. It is just our annual software agreement for maintenance for our partners.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion with Judge's authorization assigned.
I'll make the motion with the Judge's authorization assigned.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the software maintenance support agreement with OpenGov Financials with the county Judge's authorization assigned. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It passes unanimously by those present. The time is currently at 9:06, so at this point, we'll move to item three, which is a public hearing that was scheduled for 9:05. Now, this is on newly proposed Henderson County subdivision regulations, which would govern plats, subdivisions of land, thoroughfare right-of-ways, lot frontages, and setbacks, and if approved, would replace the current Henderson County subdivision regulations. And at this time is when we will need a motion to move into public hearing.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Toole, seconded by Commissioner Spivey to move into public hearing at 9:07. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Is there anyone that would wish to speak to this matter? This is on the proposed Henderson County subdivision regulations. If you would, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. And again, you will be getting three minutes from that point.
Good morning, Court. My name is David Dees. I live at 4246 County Road 4607 in Henderson County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to review and comment on the Henderson County subdivision regulations. I provided my comments to you in email dated September the 11th. I'm submitting a consideration for an addition to the regulation. There are many tracts of land in Henderson County that have power utilities and/or underground easements or pipelines that traverse numerous parcels of land. It's suggested that you include in your regulations that developers must communicate during this phase a plan of how they would address these specific utilities that traverse. The current regulations as written certainly address new easements, new utilities, communication, electrical, water, sewer, and does so in a very detailed way. But there is no mention of existing regulation. As we all know, in Henderson County, there are numerous underground pipelines, and there may or may not be easements that have been established as far back as 50, 75 years earlier. And my request for comments is that I want the commission in these regulations to require developers to notify you of these existing utilities before you approve any subdivision plats, and that it not be an afterthought. To that end, I've suggested some language, and the language is, "The plat must show any existing electrical or other aerial or buried utilities or underground pipelines, gas, oil, or water that traverses the subject property where such utilities extend to properties adjacent to the subject parcel of land. Should the developer wish to remove or relocate any of these existing utilities, they must work with the appropriate utility to design and relocate these utilities, underground or aerial, that will not affect adjacent customers or landowners. Such plans should be included with the submittal to county officials via the utility certification in Appendix E, which already exists." I appreciate your matter and consideration for this change to the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I want to add to what he's...
If you would, please state.
Oh, Deborah Dees, 4246 County Road 4607. I want to add to what my husband said. I really do not want, and we have, we've already spoken with Encore, do not want the direction of the feed changed for our electricity just because the subdivision wants to come in and move the poles around and change the direction of our feed. We don't want to have, we want something in there that we don't have to provide more easements when there already is power lines to our property. So that's one thing I would like to, to ask. I did read the subdivision regulations. I did not see anything about power, where it comes from, that you can change it, change the direction. I didn't see anything like that in the subdivision. The second thing I wanted to address majorly is, the city of Athens has passed an ordinance, and I left a copy on this desk, has passed a future thoroughfare plan. It is on their website. It is very clearly on their website. There is a loop that goes through many county properties, including one adjacent to my property. I saw a plat earlier this year from one of the commissioners, and it did not address any kind of easement for this thoroughfare, any. So I want to be sure that you all consider the city's plans for thoroughfares and make sure any future development includes easements for their road plans, because this particular loop from 31 to 175 will go through many county properties. So I just want to add that somehow to the subject. I couldn't find it in there where it said, if a, if a developer wants to put a road, that's different. But I'm talking about when you approve a plat, are you making sure there is an easement for any city of Athens future thoroughfares that they already have passed the ordinance earlier this year? It was passed in 99, and it was passed again with some changes, but not any to the thoroughfare plan in this, earlier this year. So I would appreciate if you would add that to the, to your plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chip Perryman, 111 LaRue Street, Athens. I want to run through, just quickly, through the proposed document with some quick changes referring by section number. Oh, I'm a commercial property owner, developer, Lake Athens, Cedar Creek, and here in Athens, mostly. Let's see, if I could, just referring to the document, 2.5 Alpha, consider a 10-foot versus 15 feet on the utility easement. 10-foot is what we typically use. 3.1 Alpha, consider 50 feet instead of 60. Dallas, looking at their document. Matter of fact, Wendy, would you just, I'm sure y'all have looked at that. That just happens to be a quickie of what City of Dallas uses. Anyhow, 3.1 Alpha can consider 50 feet. 3.1 Charlie, consider, does it really have to be paved? Could it be collache or gravel? 3.1 Foxtrot, consider 15 feet. 3.1 G Golf, cul-de-sac parking, plenty of developments have huge radius cul-de-sacs to allow for parking, so consider a variance, extra 15 feet on the radius to allow parking. 3.3 Charlie, lots of roads here in the county do cross dams, including Texod FM 317, the Athens Fishing Game Lake Dam. That's kind of rough, prohibiting roads on dams. 3.6 Alpha, pardon me, 20 feet is good. I think I'm nearly finished with this. Forgive me, I'll jump to this. Let's see, 5-foot topo, I don't have time to refer to this section. That's kind of, the topos are expensive. Consider whether that 5-foot topo is really necessary. 24-month completion is probably good. Financial guarantee is a fabulous idea. We can all think of a lot of abandoned developments that developer ran out of money. Oh, and there's a notice requirement to the address of the lot owner. Nearly everything I've got is vacant lots, so you'd be mailing something that no one would ever get. Consider appraisal district address for a better notice address. Generally, great idea. Some of these provisions, though, consume so much of our developable land that we're left with compromised lot sizes because of some of the requirements on road widths, utility easements, and cul-de-sacs, so thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak? I'll make one last call for anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing portion of the consideration Henderson County subdivision regulations. As it appears, no one wishes to speak further. We have a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Toole, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to close public hearing at 9:16. All those in favor of the motion? It passes unanimously. Item number four, consider and take... Pardon me, just one moment. Mr. Perryman put in his, and he spoke. I'm going to make sure I get everyone in on these. And this one is during the time. Item number four is consider and take action on newly proposed Henderson County subdivision regulation, which would govern plats, subdivisions of land, thoroughfare right-of-ways, lot frontages, and setbacks, and if approved, would replace the Henderson County subdivision regulations. And this is the portion where we take action, but we do have an individual by the name of BG Pierce. If you would, please come forward, and as you have seen, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's BG Pierce. I live 1411 Carolane, Tool, Texas. Don't hold that against me. I have a question. I forgot one, I lost my notes this morning, but there's a provision in there about what the spacing is going to be into entryways for new developments. Do you have that number? I've got a number of 450 feet, but I don't know if that's accurate or not.
For, we, this is not the opportunity where we speak directly with you.
Correct.
It's where you speak on the item, and we'll try to bring that out.
I would say that, okay, I get that. I'm just, if I'm wrong on the number, but if the spacing is going to be 450 feet per cut-in or per driveway for different entities, that number is kind of, seemed to be pretty unreasonable. So I like consideration of that number either being forward or more clarified on when tracts are being split up. I know there's a 10-acre rule that's in place, cutting up tracks that aren't planted subdivisions, so that's going to be kind of tough on rectangular tracks on county roads all across the county. So that's the only comment I had or question. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I would request, Mr. Strong, if you would come forward through this. You have, with the county attorney's office, has worked diligently on these and been part of many of the conversations and in consultation with our firm that we've assisted us in this.
Are we in item four?
Yes, we are in item four.
Good morning, Court. As you all are aware, we've been working on this for quite some time, as you stated, Judge. We've also been working with outside experts through Public Workshop, using their expertise in kind of developing these new sub, proposed subdivision regulations. And I kind of went over it at our last Commissioners' Court where we discussed the subdivision, but I can briefly talk about these changes, and I can address some of the public comment Sorry, I brought a lot of notes today. So the main changes between these current proposed subdivision regulations and the old or current subdivision regulations that were initially gone through the court in 2008 and then updated in 2018 is the addition of Form Appendix T, which is going to be the legal exception form. As you're all aware, the definition of subdivision is very broad. When an owner divides a track into two or more parts to lay out lots, additions, or a subdivision, that includes all kinds of property divisions. And so that broad definition, though, has a lot of legal exceptions under the statute 232. And so Appendix T is a way for the county and also the homeowner that's looking into subdividing to see if one of those exceptions applies where they don't need a plat. And that should help facilitate knowing when that exception's applying or not without so much county intervention. It allows the clerk's office to look at that quickly. Things can get a little confusing when someone presents them a scenario, so that should help. And it doesn't require any signatures from a county official, so they don't have to go through court or through the development office for that. We've also added Appendix U, which is a situation where a subdivision definition does apply, and there is no legal exception. And so they would need a plat, but there may be a reason for a discretionary exemption. And so that would have to go through the court, but that would allow for some of the smaller subdivisions that maybe don't really need as much regulation as a 200-lot subdivision. And so that would allow that, this court to look into maybe issuing a discretionary exemption to plating that could be presented to the clerk's office. The new regulations often also differentiate between Tier 1 and Tier 2 types of development. So that's another added benefit of these proposed subdivision regulations, that they're going to differentiate between the larger subdivisions and the smaller subdivisions, and they'll have different applications therein. As Mr. Perryman mentioned, we have added the bond forms. We've always had bonds, but they weren't uniform, and so now we have uniform bond provisions within the proposed subdivision regulations. And as Mr. Perryman stated, that would be a 24-month construction process. Right now, it's 12 months, so they're actually, the county's giving developers more time to build. The county's also gotten into compliance with House Bill 3167, if these proposed subdivisions pass today, which eliminated the preliminary process. So in a legislative session in the past, the legislature got rid of the preliminary process and changed some of the timelines. And so with these new proposed subdivision regulations, the county should be in compliance with these new rules. Also in Appendix S, the filing fees for the county went up. It's been a while since they were updated, and it just kind of goes to meeting inflationary issues with the county and making sure that we keep up with, with inflation. So I think those were originally proposed in 2008, so it's been a while since we looked at those. And hopefully, the fees are a little bit easier to understand now that we don't have that preliminary process. The county's also broadened the ability to regulate RV parks through Chapter 5.2, and so that will hopefully get more uniform regulation as far as RV parks are concerned. And then lastly, since the last subdivision regulations were passed through this court, the development office has been implemented in this county, and so now that is utilized within these proposed subdivisions, using the development office. And what that does for the county is it makes it uniform from precinct to precinct. It's also, plating, as you're all aware, is a full-time job these days. You all are busy with road and bridge, enter local agreements with your cities, you're doing all kinds of things. And so now we have a dedicated development office that can focus purely on plating and subdivisions. And then it also helps to eliminate any actual or perceived political pressures. As your elected officials, this then brings it to an office that doesn't have those types of pressures. I'm not saying that happens, but there's always the perception therein, so that should eliminate that. If someone can't get a resolution through the development office, there is a process where they may appear before the Commissioners' Court, kind of like an appeal. So if, if there's a disagreement on an interpretation of the statute or something, they always have due process or recourse to come to this court. So that's kind of the main changes, and that kind of segue into what Valerie Baum mentioned, talking about lot frontages. So currently, we do have lot frontage regulations. The proposed ones do not, so Ms. Baum was correct. It is on an agenda item because if these pass today, they would supersede the old ones, so it does affect lot frontage by getting rid of those lot frontages. During public comment, the idea of lot frontages, the discussion came up, and the expert that the county had sought expertise from had had some reluctance on our ability to regulate lot frontages. Statutorily, there is some ways to regulate, and so that's an issue we probably want to look into as the county, just trying to see maybe why that expert frowned upon it versus the pros and cons and the way we can regulate that. And that is something we can add to later, but Ms. Baum is correct, the current ones do not have that. As far as Mr. Deborah, or Ms. Deborah Dees and Mr. Dees, I appreciate their comments on easements. It's always important. It's always important to, uh, look into easements. The way the current regs are operated, that you have to report all, um, proposed and existing easements, the new regulations say all easements. We don't differentiate between proposed and existing, um, which infers that all easements is all easements. And so those should be listed without an addendum. Those should already be, um, part of this process. And that would be through Rule 2.5B, as in Beta, and 7.1B as in Beta, and then, um, 7.1B12. And then as Mr. Dees, um, discussed, Appendix E. And that should be all easements. And so that's something that, that should already be regulated. I've also had discussions with Encore and T-Vac representatives, and they do work with developers, um, within the platted area for all utility easements, including electric. If it, if it's affecting a landowner or an adjacent landowner or homeowner, um, the developer and the utility easement wants to work with those folks. If they're trying to obtain a new easement, they would need the permission of those adjacent folks. So they can't just randomly put an easement in somebody's yard or private property. However, if it's or, an already existing public easement, um, then we have to look at the purpose and scope of what a public easement is. So we want to differentiate between a private easement and a public easement. When we have all of these lines on our house, water lines, electric lines, it seems like those are ours. But really, the public utility easements act for the greater good of the entire county with long-term development in mind. That's what the purpose of a public utility easement is. And so if they're already existing, the purpose isn't necessarily for that homeowner, although it seems like it is, it's also for long-term development. So, um, an example, if, if the county regulated sidewalks and we mandated that you have to have a sidewalk, um, individual homeowners couldn't put little toll roads on their portion of the sidewalk or block access. That sidewalk would be for the public use, for people to walk on, ride their bikes on, whatever. Um, but people couldn't just block them because it's their home or their land. And so a public easement serves everyone. And so if we were to add that language that it can have no effect, um, what I suspect would happen is that getting development passed at all would be almost, it would be very difficult. Um, we'd have to get letters from the adjacent landowners, um, approving it. Um, that may be beyond the scope of what the county can regulate. The other issue is, I think, some savvy homeowners maybe would want to get paid, uh, to write those letters. And so developers are going to be writing a lot of checks to the adjacent, uh, property owners. Um, and so I think the unintended consequences of that could be greater than the benefit when we already have some of those regulations within here, so. But I do respect the idea of that, and that is something that the county should think about when we're looking at these, is looking at, at utility easements, public easements. And I think we are doing that as a court, so. I wasn't sure exactly what Mr. Pierce was referring to. I didn't have time to look with the 450 feet. There are text dot requirements for spacing. Um, that goes beyond the scope of the county. That's a text dot regulation. I think you can get variances or exemptions from them, but you're going to need a permit from them to be able to open up to a, uh, Texas-regulated highway. Um, there's also interstate rules as well. I don't think that applies in this county. And so those should mostly be for text dot issues, I would imagine. And then Mr. Perryman addressed several of kind of the nuances in, um, distance and feet, and I would just defer to the court, um, and your expertise. You all are the road bridge experts and, uh, street experts and so. But I appreciate Mr. Perryman's comments on that.
Court, questions, comments?
What was the, uh, the question Mr. Perryman asked on the cul-de-sac, which I, I know most of our cul-de-sacs out in the county are fairly small, but our reasoning was, uh, the 45-foot, uh, and no parking on the cul-de-sac.
Yes, and that was the issue that Mr. Perryman brought up, is having enough access for parking, making it wide enough.
But that could, that, that could come in as a variance, couldn't it? If they did a 60-foot and allowed parking.
Yeah, someone could always do more than asked. Um, if they wanted to do less, they would need a variance. Um, I think you could go above and beyond our regulations.
We're just putting minimum size in, but they can't go larger if they like.
Yes. Those are the minimum cul-de-sac regulations. And we wanted that, to make sure that it, there was enough room for, um, emergency access, uh, turnaround. And so, um, I would imagine there's enough space with parking, but it's kind of hard to tell. Every, every area's different, but, um, the alternative, not having cul-de-sac regulations as we know in the county in the past, we've had a lot of, a lot of, um, very narrow county roads that just end. And, um, I know that's been really hard for emergency vehicles and other people that get stuck on these kind of dead ends. And so the cul-de-sacs are meant to help and not harm. But if someone wanted to go bigger than that, I would, by all means, do that.
Commissioners, questions?
I, I think the committee and, uh, Mr. Strong has done a, uh, a great job of getting people involved, uh, and finding out where we need to be. We're, uh, we're here today because of three, four, four leg, legislations since our last one have been done, and there's been a lot of, uh, lobbying, uh, down in Austin for, uh, subdivision regulations and for developers doing their, wanting to, uh, change the way that counties and, and people do things. And I think that we're, uh, our subdivisions, the stuff that we have in here has been tested in the courts, am I correct, Mr. Strong?
Mr. Bass is the expert that we used, and he's used these very similar, almost identical wording in many counties, yes. And so.
There may be some fine tuning, but as you said, back in '08 was the first time that the Henderson County had subdivision regulations. And, uh, I believe Judge McKinney always states that Cedar Creek Lake was, uh, the, uh, the lake in the subdivision area that, uh, the state of Texas, uh...
This is how not to do it?
Yes, how not to do it. So we are, um, this is not a government overreach to what we're trying to do. It, it's a deal to, to, uh, make Henderson County look better. Drive-up appeal, uh, even with RV parks that we've been inundated with in the last, uh, well, since probably COVID, uh, tiny homes and manufactured, uh, manufactured homes, subdivisions, and then all the way up to, to the high end. So the, uh, you are correct that there is a 450-feet text dot requirement from entrance to entrance, but they do allow variances. And I think our, with our new development office, the way that, that it has been acting in the last, uh, year, year and a half is a, uh, a great thing for us commissioners because now, as you stated, one, uh, everything's straight across the board, across the county, and, uh, that kind of stuff. So the committee and yourself and the new development office has done a great job, and also the public that was working, uh, alongside, uh, you and the committee has, has done a great job. And I think that we are going to have some fine, some fine tuning, but I believe that we're close to, to where we need to be. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you bring up a really excellent point that if there's something in these regulations that aren't working if they're passed today, then by all means, we need to relook at that, reevaluate that. And we're always open to public comment. Uh, this affects them, this is their lives, real estate agents, developers. And so if they're noticing something that's wrong with these or just not workable, um, certainly we could always amend these.
I've noticed on several of them, and I've had some questions about, uh, if you build a road in your subdivision, it has to be up to county standards. But there is also some wording in there about public and private. What constitutes that?
So, at the beginning of the development, even a private road should be up to the county standards as we would for a public road. There's a period of time where then that private road can be, um, petitioned into the public road maintenance program, or it can remain private. Um, but the county wants to make sure that the private roads are at least to county standard, whether it's public or private.
Further questions?
Yeah, we'd, uh, I'd like, uh, we've got two representatives here from our power companies if, if later they can speak and, and, and explain the process that we go through for providing power on, on what the developers have to go through to do it. And when we get our, basically, we get a, uh, letter of service that's given to the commissioner's court, and that's what we go off of, that the power company is pleased with everything that's being done in the development, everything, and everything's paid for upfront before we get the letter of service that we okay a subdivision.
Correct. There's going to be a, like a will serve letter type issue and a contract with that company that the development has enough area and resource to, to provide for that utility for that amount of people now and into the future.
And we did the same thing with the water.
Correct.
That there has to be public water there run to the lots and stuff before we'll approve.
And same with sewer and/or if you're going to get a, um, septic system, if you're not going to be on the public sewer system.
But one question was, you know, uh, of a change, changing the route of the lines of a pre-existing easement, uh, that developer has the, the right to be able to pay the utility company to reroute the line. Now, if it goes onto someone else's property and they say, "No, you're not moving it on my property," then that developer is going to have to route it on their property and bring it into where the existing location was of the property line to continue on. They would not be able to...
If they're proposing a new one, correct.
New easement, yeah. They wouldn't have to sign an easement.
Correct. But if it's an already existing, those are kind of for the, they're dedicated to the public. But a new one, they would need that person's permission. And then if you have the ones on the land itself that you're subdividing, you would maybe want to release those easements if you're relocating.
Yeah, it is okay.
Other questions?
I also had a question.
Yes.
By one of the public utilities about our Appendix E, our public utility certificate. If, if it wouldn't be better to have a, uh, electric utility certificate, a water utility certificate, and a, maybe a other.
Sure.
So whenever we was doing our checklist, you know, you didn't have to, you could see if it was the electric utility or the public utility. I mean, or the water utility or whatever.
I think that's...
He, he just asked a question. It's thought it might be easier if there was an electric and a water.
I think that's a good point. And that's something maybe the development office could look at when she is going, when that office is going through the, um, plat process. Each utility is kind of separated out within, within the regulations. So you have wastewater, you have water, um, electric, and so they're all kind of different regulations, and they're all required. As far as Appendix E, though, it is a catch-all, so.
I think, just like Commissioner Tulley said a while ago, you know, we didn't make a bunch of wholesale changes in this. It's not a lot of changes in our old, from our new, except for those things that were legislated to us from Austin.
Commissioner, you asked about the, uh, utility companies, um, asking them if they would like to speak during this. Any representatives here that would wish to speak from a utility's perspective? Okay. Thank you. The, okay. While we're on that, further questions? Uh, Mr. Perryman brought up, um, 2.5A, which continually dealing with utility easements. That discussion that we, that we had during this, um, for better explanation, when you look at this, says 15 feet to be provided along each property line of all lots. And it's discussing specifically those large, that is, uh, for those larger lot, those larger developments. Because with your smaller ones, it usually follows public right-of-way to get into, but your, the larger developments getting electrical service in, much of this, that 15-foot of right-of-way, um, it talks, um, surface utilities at five foot, um, of the property line and then subsurfaces to be placed within 10 feet of the property line in conformity with other law. These particular ones that we've gone to have been developed over years because these developments, I have said many times, Cedar Creek Lake and Lake Toackin taught the state of Texas how not to develop. Because if you had $10, a bulldozer and a piece of ground, you were developing. And in my 20 years as county commissioner, I had to go up and clean up a lot of this. And when I say that, individuals coming in and you have just a very small bit of right-of-way to run water along these developments. And runoff water is the number one enemy to roads and number one enemy to these individuals that have waterfront property. And so many of these particular locations is where they were built and water's coming in their door. We tried to correct that, and we had issues with getting into utilities because they're in the drainage portion of these right-of-ways. And it added difficulty into building in or improving that infrastructure because the utilities were not well thought out in the beginning. And that was even a part of the original 2008 subdivision regulations. We really took that into consideration because of the complications. One time in particular, we were assisting in cleaning up and, um, taking in roads in Cherokee Shores. Everyone knows Cherokee Shores. We go through there with a blade, go down about four inches to, to handle the water. We bring up water lines, phone lines, sewer lines. I got a bill for $82,000 that the precinct did. Those utilities were not within the locations they were supposed to be, and they were not set at the death. And it's those lessons learned all the way back to 2008 of real-world issues that pop up without fully thought-out development. So that, that's part of the reason why 2.5 is, is really looked at. That, that was one of the most, um, common occurrences in these processes. And talking about the private roads versus public roads. Because of those two, I, those two pathways to come into public service, the roads to be maintenance in public, by public funds, having them built to the standards at the private level so that anytime until completion to when the Lord returns, that if they did come into the county, they would be set and ready to go. So you, again, is the same scenario I pointed out with the utility easements, you didn't have the same problem with drainage. The commissioner's know better than anyone, the, the number one thing we fight is water and being able to handle that and the effects that it has on the property owners. You wouldn't believe how many years I've seen tuba fours laid out in front of somebody's door every time it rings to keep water from coming in the front door. They say, "Well, why is that our problem?" Well, we're the elected officials and our phones ring over that. So ensuring that we have this well-thought-out process in the beginning and actually taking in consideration the developers in many, in many aspects, we were at five acres forever in our development because we felt we were a rural county and we weren't going to get into the business of telling people what they could do. As times have changed and the state's approach to regulation has changed completely, jumping up to that 10-acre is, is very much warranted now. And the tiered process of these, of these lesser developments, and I don't mean by value or any of that, I mean by their actual, um, size and impact and who is doing them, we gave these exemptions to move them right along. If your neighbors are trading property, we don't need to be involved in that. If you have, um, statutorily veterans, we can't be involved in that. There's a whole list of those. If you have, um, statutory veterans, we can't be involved in that. There's a whole list of those. And this set of regulations does a much better job identifying those. This court does not want to get into anybody's business. We were very, very restricted in our authorities in 232 to even to be able to be a part of this. Because it's only because of the division of land that we can even be involved. Much of the reason why we cannot do the lot dimensions is because size of lots is regulated by TCEQ rules, not through Chapter 232.
Correct.
232. So we had to, in our previous 0818 rules, there was lot widths designated on acreage. So you wouldn't have flag lots or you wouldn't have these long narrow lots, which the legislature has changed that. And we cannot regulate those other than by the tools that are laid out here. So it was removed. The 450 feet is a, is a text dot rule. All roads belong to the state. If that 450 is a requirement that through statute or court rulings, we still have that variance option. Is that correct?
Well, text dot would. On a state highway? No.
All roads.
All roads, yeah, we can.
Or state, or text dot, belong to the state of Texas by law.
And they're, they're accessible by the public.
Yes. And if 450 is transferable from text dot onto a non-text dot road but a state road.
Sure.
We have variance options available.
Yes.
To allow to have that taken place. The cul-de-sac, part of the reason why the cul-de-sacs are such an issue, because every time commissioners want to go in and work in subdivision, guess what? Everybody's parked in the middle of the street at a cul-de-sac. And that's some of that reasoning. But as Commissioner said, we have variance capability to allow that, to get it larger and to provide for the fact of emergency vehicles being getting in and out. Parking size, dams. Dams are a growing issue, as we know, also with the Fisher, I'm sorry, the Fisherman's Dam over there. You know, we had an issue with it washing out in 15, 2015 or 16. Same issue kind of arises with this. It is aesthetically pleasing, but there, unless there is concrete engineering provided with that in the building of it. The county is at risk of sanctioning the division of sale that could imperil folks. We've got, I go back to in the mid 2000s, Carolyn Estates, back around there, they've got that dead end in it. And that eight-foot culvert washed out back there and trapped 40 residents that we had to use boat to get to. And again, this is a private subdivision, but by emergency declaration, the county went in, filled in those locations, repaired that so that you could get access in and out. It's, it's those type of thoughts that come to mind when you're looking at some of these that, yeah, it's a, it's a one-in-a-million shot. But we have seen instances. And that's why the concern about dams and those type of crossings.
And dams are regulated, Judge, through TCEQ, through state regulation.
On water retention, not.
Correct. There's the definition. They define it, but.
Right. But not, that dam integrity is built upon impounding water, not weighted tracking.
Yeah.
And also the fact that, if any of you know what a nutrient is, they love to dig homes into dams. I think that's the five-foot topo, and I would like to bring Ms. Kimbrough up and discuss, oh, there she is. Ms. Kimbrough, the topo maps. I'm sorry. Let's talk about the five-foot topo requirement on that.
And our current regs have had topo requirements.
I know, but, but the sizing.
I want to say they were close.
Were, were they?
Yeah. There's a difference between the feet, depending on where your topo lines are. But that might be Ms. Kimbrough. She's our drainage topo expert.
And, and this gets into the floodplain aspect, which is, is on that. Ms. Kimbrough, would you mind coming forward? Many of you don't know, Ms. Kimbrough is with the development office, our director. And when we're talking about the topos and specifically, it is stated in here, a five-foot topo. Could you talk about the importance of that and the impacts of the topo requirements?
Generally, it goes back to working with the developer's engineer and our county engineer to assure the drainage requirements are met. The safety and the support of our flood damage prevention ordinance. So it may start there. There may be recommendations that differ a little bit, but we want to go off the words of the experts, which would be the engineers in those cases.
Okay.
And that would be at the, start with the developer's engineer, because we've had some serious problems in the past with drainage.
Okay. Thank you. One of the things that we don't have, don't remember seeing in here that was in the original regs, is we've required a 100-jer hydraulic study.
Correct.
Folks didn't, a lot of folks didn't know that. That is not in here. Because of what you had was, once you have 20 acres full of rooftops, you create hydraulic flow that exceeds the capability of existing drainage systems. And can change many of the characteristics of the floodplain even.
Correct.
So I wanted to bring mention to the topo discussion and its, its importance in the planning, though I agree, in some cases, it can be a bit excessive. But it does have some importance. I'm not sure what would be a more reasonable topo layout. But we have to rely on the, the experts in that as far as the engineers and the floodplain requirement.
Correct.
One of the reasons, you know, we've talked about it before on having the topo, is we have a lot of issues and complaints of somebody re-diverting water after the situation. So we've got something that shows what the layout of the land was prior. And if there's any changes made by an individual that's bought a lot and re-diverted water onto somebody else that wasn't supposed to go there, then we've got backup there on what the original layout of the land was. And, because it says in state law that you can't divert water over onto another person's property that normally doesn't go there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrough. Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Kimbrough? I want to go back to the comment of Ms. Dees, talking about the thoroughfare, having that plan involved. My understanding is, is that, that the governmental rules of one body and another. A thoroughfare plan is a, I don't want to call it a wish list, but it is a long-range planning. But it is nothing concrete tied to the, the properties.
Here's our idea going forward.
Pardon?
Here's our idea going forward. This is what we'd like to do.
Right. And, and given that, having, what is it, eight, nine municipalities in the county? You could arguably have multiple plans that would be addressed by, in the subdivision regulations. And my, my line of questioning, my line of thought is, is that they can change those plans regularly. I don't know how we could fit them in, in our subdivision regulations.
If they've already, I don't know, bought the land and have the public thoroughfares already done, those would be for the public use. If they're just proposed and you own the land, they would have to obtain that land. And so the homeowner would still have rights or the landowner. So it'd be hard to regulate that.
I think. Yes, please.
Our concern was easement from access off of a public thoroughfare. State law already directs that. I mean, we can read from that. It was one of your cases that was mitigated where the developed courts came out very clearly. If you own property that are butts, public land or public roadway, again, subject to regulation, you have the right to access your property from that public road or public. So I think that's the answer to Ms. Dees's concern is, because a public road, a thoroughfare built by the city, would be if anybody's property is butts that has the, has the ability to. The only other thing I'd like to point out, kind of an adage around it to make it very clear, is we have to understand these regulations. It's always hard to regulate using a cookie cutter that will fit every single development. And remember, nothing in here advocates or takes away from the county's ability to issue variances. And you can always issue a variance to be less stringent. You can never issue a variance to be more stringent. And so there's a lot of things, which Perry points out, you know, you mentioned the paid versus unpaid. Yeah, there may be times where we would allow it. There may be times we would allow 10-foot even rather than 15-foot, or 50-foot rather than 60-foot, or a row over a dam. All of those things can be addressed through the variance process. But, you know, you can't be less stringent in your regulations and create situations that it's not a good fit and it's not a good situation in your struggle with what's in your regulations. Just want to jump in and point that out, particularly Ms. Dees's comments.
I believe, I've tried to take notes and answer the questions that have been stated. I think I've exhausted what I was, what I took down. Notice to owner in that, part of the reason why notice to owner is in subdivision regulations has also to do with the cancellation of subdivisions. Of which that requirement is, when you have an existing subdivision that you wish to abandon the plat, it is a requirement that any of the property owners be notified of that. And I believe that is why the inclusion of that particular line.
Correct, Judge. It's statutory under 232.
It's more on the tail end instead of on, on the front end of the process is because of that statutory requirement. And I think that's all. All easements are supposed to be verified. We even had that, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, where we were.
We've been getting them from surveyors saying there may be easements.
Maybe.
We've made them go back and redo their, their notes and stuff so that if there is an easement, it has to be platted on the plat or even on replats. We take them home and they put on there, may be easements, and they got to either be put on there or take that note off. They can't be, the may word cannot be used.
So, Court, we've had a lot of discussion here, questions coming from the public, discussions about what happened. At this point in time, discussion among ourselves and possible action.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Next one?
Like I say, we, this has been a long, long go and legislative has, you know, changed some of their rules. And prior to this, we had preliminary plats, which was a, a good process and stuff. But times have changed and we've got a lot of big developers and stuff. And the main reason I've seen it change is, is there, a lot of these developers are coming in and they're buying a place. And they've got it where you can get your plat approved, go to final plat, and the next day, they can start selling lots. And that way, they can use their revenue off the lots for their infrastructure. And, you know, we're not all really for that. We like the old way that it was, but there's nothing we can do about it. So that's what started this change on the rules and stuff. And we have to approve this plat within 30 days of it being turned in and filed at the clerk's office. If we don't get it in court and approve or disapprove of it, it automatically proves on its own. So that's a new rule in there too, that we do have to bring it to court within 30 days of when they file it at the clerk's office. And, and so we got to have all these bonds and stuff that you put up to ensure that the people that buy these lots, that this infrastructure is going to be put in. So that's one of the main things too. And we've been having some trouble slowing stuff down on people not being able to get their bonds and stuff like that on a lot of these lots. So I think when we go in, we're going to have to get it approved. And like I say, we're going to run into some headwinds on it, on a few things. And we may have to come back and make a few amendments and stuff like that, but we're, we'll look into that and that'd be part of it, you know. But they're so far off right now by what legislate has got on our current subdivisions, we got to get these other ones because we can't post them on the website until we've got them approved. So everybody's coming in at the old development deal and looking at it and saying, well, that's, y'all are saying it's different than what y'all got on y'all's website right now. And, but by the state rules, all that is a gray area that we're having to go by. So we're having to go by the state rules.
Court, question, any further comments?
I'd like to thank the county attorney's office and the development office and the public for all your input in helping us get these regulations going.
Anything further?
Been, been a long, two-year process. And I'd also like to thank the county attorney's office and Kenneth for all the work he's put into it, enjoy the work she's put into it. We also had lawyers from Texas Association of County come in and advise us on this. Our engineers came in. It's not something we just come up haphazardly with. We spent a lot of time looking at it, had a lot of advice on it, a lot of expert advice. And we try to put something together that's going to please most of the constituents in the county and, and make it sustainable for the public. And I know we won't please everybody, but like all of us have said, there's some things that may come along that we have to change. And that's what we can do as a court. So I think what we've got here is about as good as you can get.
Final comment? Well, I want to thank everyone that was before, but also want to thank y'all that took the time to read the subdivision regulations, to come forward, to bring out many of these issues so that at least we could explain them. And give some understanding of what the driving thought of the court is in these matters. I am quite sure that the legislature will handcuff us further in this next session and we'll be doing this all again in about a year's time. It's, it is the current environment of which we live in. As I said, I have to rely on history and the history of development has come a long way. We felt very good about our regulations, but the legislature didn't. The preliminary plat was the best way to protect property buyers and to ensure the development. They've got a bigger lobby that comes and talks to them in Austin. We actually had a developer say, I'm going to go see my senator. You can't do this to me. That was in that precinct for development. Now, the development turned out great and he proved that we could. But wasn't long, the next session, they changed the laws. So I'll stop my conversation on that. So thank you all for your involvement. Court, if there's nothing further?
I think one of the final comments we need to say is this court's not, are, I'm not speaking for them, but we're a big personal property rights person. And I am, we're not trying to do the overreach of government. It's what Austin is telling us that we shall do, not may, shall. And we're doing the, following the, the Chapter 232, along with our county attorney office and the new development office and working to that way. My foreman and I talked lengthy about this stuff of back when Judge McKinney was the commissioner. And this day and time, with looking at the audience to say that we're not going to see the 40 to 50 to 100-acre parcels of land that our great-great-grandparents owned and have been in their, their family for 40 or 50 years. Anytime the kids get a hand on a 100-acre parcel, they start cutting it up and selling it off. And that's what's happening to us right now since probably 2020 is they have taken their 40 parcel ranch and cut it up, 50-acre parcel of land and cut it up. And they're trying any way and everything to, to make money off of it. And that's what we're trying to do is make Henderson County.
And that's what we're trying to do is make Henderson County better for the people that are buying it, uh, and moving here. And so it's, but we're, it's not an overreach of government, it's, it's the personal property rights that we're trying to help protect. That and the realtors that are, that are selling that. Because there is one, one case that we know out there that has, um, did, uh, the person was from out, out of town and they bought it and then they couldn't get electrical service because of an easement of the other property owner next to them and wouldn't let, would allow them to get that easement across their property. So it's a, I just say that do, please do your due diligence when you're out there and make sure that your client is, has all the information that they need, so.
Thank you. Court, without any further ado, do we have a motion?
Judge, I move we approve the newly proposed Henderson County subdivision regulations, which would govern plat subdivision of land, thoroughfare, lot, lot frontages and setbacks, and if approved, would take, uh, will replace the current Henderson County subdivisions.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the proposed Henderson County subdivision regulations, which would govern plats, subdivision of land, thoroughfare, right-of-ways, lot frontages and setbacks, and being approved would replace the current Henderson County subdivision regulations. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number six is consider and take action on the grant award for the fiscal year 2024 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Funding. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, we were awarded $22,221. Uh, this is from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It's the Patrick Lake Bulletproof Vest Partnership.
This is the one that we have historically participated in?
Correct. We still have about thirty thousand in funds that expire in 2025, and now we have a new set of funds equaling the $22,221 that'll expire in 2026, so.
Court, questions?
Is that a matching grant?
Yes, sir. Fifty percent.
And I think we got vest on the bills as today too, don't you?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Are we on number five or six?
Five. Five. Excuse me, well, oh, I did, I jumped five and went to six. I apologize. We're on six. So given, given that being on six and the bulletproof vest funding, is there any further discussion concerning this program? If not, entertain a motion.
So move to approve with the authorization assigned on that, with the judge's authorization signed?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the grant award for the fiscal year 2024 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Funding. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll move back to item five and consider and take action on contract with Aprius for the maintenance of fiscal year 2025 statewide automated victim notification service data. In court last week, we approved the previous contract on, for this service, and now we are moving into the maintenance portion of it. Ms. Vaughn?
Correct. This is from the Office of the Attorney General. They've certified Aprius as the vendor for the statewide automated victim notification services, and this is just our contract renewal.
Questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by, with authorization?
With the judge's authorization.
Thank you.
Second.
Um, motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tully, to approve the contract with Aprius for maintenance of the fiscal year 2025 statewide automated victim notification service data. Any further discuss, with the judge's authorization signed, any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll leapfrog to seven. Sorry about that. Item number seven is consider and take action acknowledging resignation letter from Justice of the Peace Precinct Two effective January 5th, 2025. And Court, as you know, we received a letter dated September 27th from Judge Pollock, um, laying out his plans for, on the future, and we do wish him the best. And um, in this notification, we are also making notification to the public that we will begin accepting resumes and applications for appointment to begin January, after January 5th of the coming year. Discussion? There is no action to be taken at this time. I want to thank Judge Pollock for his years of service with the county and wish him best of luck. There's nothing further, we'll move on.
We might have to accept the resignation?
Uh, we can. It's, it's an acknowledging of the resignation. And that, and that truly is what we're here for, is to acknowledge it, put it forward in there. There is no action that is required by the court on his resignation, being that he is an elected official. Uh, moving on, we'll move to item eight, consider and take action to accept applications and resumes for the Henderson County Justice of the Peace Precinct Two. And as I stated further, um, this we can move to take action on.
I'll make the motion to accept the applications and resumes for the Henderson County Justice of the Peace Precinct Two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to begin accepting applications and resumes for Henderson County Justice of the Peace Precinct Two. All those in favor of the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Would it be a, a date that we cut off or?
Normally we leave them open thirty days, you know, thirty days. So this appointment, um, cannot be filled until January 5th.
Sure.
Um, it's, you, usually we try to do it in about thirty, forty-five days. We, we've got ample time that's being given to us, but if we begin now so that we get them all by mid-November, then that leaves us, you know, time to do the appointments, taking into account of all the holidays that we have, five of our twelve observed holiday days off for during that two, that two-month period. So, any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item nine, consider and take action on a memorandum of understanding and authorize county judge to execute with entities receiving water systems, the ARPA Water System Generator Grants. And I'd like to request a strong comeback to the podium with us.
Good morning, once again, Court.
Good morning. Now, this agreement, um, we've discussed this agreement for about a year and a half, maybe even longer. And if you would, lay it out for the court, please.
Yes, Your Honor, this, um, agreement is a form agreement that would be entered between the water supply corporations and the county. Um, this would apply to the water supply corporations that are awarded this grant through ARPA funding for water generators. Uh, this memorandum of understanding is really trying to achieve several goals. Uh, one of those goals is that the water supply corporations are going to agree to the construction contract, um, and purchase and installation of the generators. The county's going to handle the procurement process. The funding is going to be handled through other means, but the water supply corporation is going to obtain these water generators and, um, basically oversee them and handle any improvements, um, and take care of them. The other goal of this memorandum is that they're also going to handle the maintenance, the water supply corporations will, um, including obtaining a maintenance service contract so that they can maintain these water generators over the course of the first ten years of service. And that will be the term of these memorandums of understanding. Really, the point of that is, um, the power to regulate by the government is kind of a, a carrot and a stick, and we're giving the carrot away at the beginning without any real return. So we're going to, we're giving the reward at the beginning, and so there has to be some kind of stick to make sure that there's no abuse there or degradation of these, uh, generators. So we've heard of other counties where, um, they received something like this, a nice gift, and they weren't taken care of, and then when they were needed, um, they were of no use. And so because there's a lot of money involved and we want these corporations to have these water generators, we also need to respect the taxpayers and make sure that they're maintaining them and keeping up with the improvements.
Court, questions?
So let's go to, uh, 1.3.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, in one, 1.32, uh, states that deal of them being able to have a maintenance agreement.
Correct.
Who, who's going to regulate that to make sure that they're doing their testing regularly during those first ten years and making sure that that generator is ready to go in case of an emergency such as snow?
So now 1.1, I think it's 11, should, um, yeah, 1.11 and 1.12 are incorporating 1.3.2. And so whenever someone obtains, they have to obtain the contract within ten days of the final signature of that service contract. They need to submit it to the county. Um, and then any addendums or changes in that contract and/or any additional contracts, some of these may expire within the ten years. Those have to go to the county. The county then has a duty to, um, receive that, um, submitted document, review it, and if we don't reject it, then we're accepting it. If they do not do what they're supposed to do, there is some enforcement language in here that reserves the right of the county to pursue legal action. The point of this whole agreement and the service contracts, though, is really to work with the water supply corporations to avoid any litigation or any enforcement. Hopefully, we can all come to the table and get that done, but there is a, a way to monitor that through 1.11 and 1.12.
And it will be, uh, it's ten years, uh, the first ten years?
Correct.
And then every year they would have to have them, uh, send us a maintenance report that they've had maintenance done on that, on that generator?
Not necessarily every year, but within ten days of obtaining it, but let's say they got a three-year service contract. Then at the end of that three-term, three-year term, if they amended it to extend that or got a new contract, they would have to then, within ten days of that change, submit it. So ideally, it could be annually, um, but a lot of these service contracts are two years, three years, eighteen months, five years. And so we wanted to work within that framework and not be too rigid on a one-year requirement.
Any further questions, comments? In this agreement, um, our action here today is approving this agreement in its form, much as we do with the tax service agreements, um, fire contracts, any of those, we're approving it in form and authorizing the, the judge to sign when in fact we do make the awards from, of the funding.
Correct. We don't know who is going to be in the fill-in-the-blank yet, and so if that's approved in form, then we're ready to go with those corporations.
Court, further questions or comments concerning this item? Entertain a motion.
So move to approve with the judge's authorization assigned.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the county judge to execute with entities receiving water system generator grants from ARPA funding. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. At this time, we're going to be moving to item 10, um, that is consideration and take action to award ARPA Water System Generator bid, and I would like for, if there's declarations that need to be made at this time.
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself of the courtroom in this matter, uh, under chapter 171 and 176 of the Texas Local Government Code, and I have filed all necessary paperwork with the county clerk's office.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Court.
And again, we're here today at this item to award the ARPA Water System Generator bid, and we have representatives from KSA, who is the engineer, who has helped us design, develop, and field thousands of questions upon water generation. So your case?
Thank you, Judge. Uh, as we discussed in the workshop last week, um, I think as we went through the bids and had a discussion about the City of Athens grant application that they had through TDM that they received, um, I think that coming out of that discussion was, uh, an award possibly by the commission, uh, for, uh, all generators with the exception of the Amwa Water Treatment Plant Generator, which is slated to be funded through a TDM HMGP grant, uh, as well as substitute alternates, uh, 12 dot O2A and 14 dot O2A, which are to provide Generac-specific generators at the remaining two Amwa facilities, the raw water intake and the water well that's adjacent to the water plant. Based upon the bid tabulations and the analysis, um, Dupla Chain Contractors, Valto, Texas is still the low bidder at that. Uh, there, with that removal of Schedule 13 and then inclusion of the substitute alternates, uh, their bid price would be $3,217,000. Uh, there was a question that was brought up during the workshop about SCADA, which is a supervisory control and data acquisition system that a lot of water systems have. Um, I did contact them, they do have that coordination effort in their bid. Um, so they will coordinate with entities, individual SCADA providers. SCADA is a very proprietary thing, um, so our plans and specs call for certain integration into it, but the actual programming of that interface must be done by that proprietary provider. Um, and that's, that's not included as a cost in this because it is proprietary and it's unique, and entity A may want just the bare minimum to be displayed on their system, entity B may want all elements of generator interface. So we leave that up to that entity, um, to decide what minimum, what level of information they want to see out of the generator. I mean, you could get loss of power, fault status, fuel levels as a bare minimum, all the way up to any and every sensor that's available on that generator. So we would leave that up to each entity for their, in a final programming. Uh, all of that input will be available, just a matter of whether the programming wants to make it show up on a screen.
Court, questions?
Yeah, on the, she's going on the price, you know, we're coming up on this, where we got to have money obligated. And we accept this bid today, that will be the final price, will it be any surprises later on in the deal? Because we're, we're going to obligate this money and there won't be any there.
Certainly.
So if there's any surprises that comes up, it needs to be put on the water company to pay the upgrades. Uh, the county will, will already be exhausted of the money when those surprises hit us.
Right. I, I can't say that there won't be. Anytime we dig in the ground, there's always that un, unknown of finding a, a line. I think some of the comments I've heard, I heard one from Leekville that brought up the fact that they think they have a little small three-quarter inch water line near where we place a generator. We can make slight adjustments in that if we find underground. It's when we, and I don't, I wouldn't foresee this happening, but I've encountered it before on a waterline project where we're trenching along and all of a sudden we hit an old foundation or a big piece of rock that we can't get through. We can't bore it, we got to bring in rock equipment to hammer it out. Those are unknowns, but I, I don't foresee us having anything like that on this project.
Commissioner, you are correct. The state local recovery funds of ARPA, of the ARPA Act do require that we meet the December 31 deadline this year to obligate those funds. And, um, when we take action here today, that $3,217,000 is the limit.
Final limit.
Is, is the final limit that is authorized for ARPA expenditures on this, on this particular project. It is a very tight window to ensure that all the monies are obligated by this first deadline.
And will our matching funds be obligated for them to pay their part on the water companies?
Their matching funds are not, uh, a requirement of this process. They, there are matching funds that they will put forward, but they do not impact, are not impacted by the ARPA State Local Recovery Funds requirements. Us making our decision today Us making our decision today gives us that checkmark. And for those wondering about the additional funds, you had skin in the game from these entities, and also there are the discussions if they want something other than a diesel-powered generator. If they choose to go with a natural gas or any of those, there is a difference in cost, and that will be upon them. The court made its decision when we were developing this project to fund the diesel portion.
And what we would do in that instance is we would specifically request a price from the contractor for that change, which would be a dedicated change. It would go through a change order process. Obviously, the court would have to approve that with some other approvals, if you will, from the entity to increase their match or provide the match between the difference.
Any further questions or discussion? We have, as I said, a total dollar amount, but there's some specifics in our verbiage that we need to take into account, that being the award of all generators except for 13.01, 13, no.
Schedule 13 in its entirety.
Schedule 13 in its entire.
Yeah, if you want to, we could make the item be award of schedules 1 through 12, 14 through 25, and substitute alternate items 12.02A and 14.02A. And we'll word that exactly that same way on a subsequent notice of award that's part of the contract documents forms for the judge's signature.
Any further discussion before call for a motion? Entertained a motion?
So how do, how do we, want to stake the motion?
So, so.
For the public, for the viewing public, we have to be very specific in how we award this to meet ARPA rules.
So, so I would say, motion, whoever motions to award ARPA Water System Generator bid, schedules 1 through 12, and 14 through 25, with substitute alternate items 12.02A and 14.02A to Dupla Chain Contractors in the amount of $3,217,000.
What happened to 13.02A?
13.02A is no longer applicable because we removed 13 in its entirety, because that's getting funded by the TDM grant through the City of Athens.
Okay.
In the amount of $3,217,000?
217. Yes, sir.
And that's going to be into Dupla Chain?
Yes, sir, as the low bidder.
Any further discussion, questions? Entertained that motion?
I'll make the motion to award the ARPA Water Supply Grant Bid, schedule 1 through 12, and 14 through 25, with substitute items 12.02A and 14.02A to duplicating contractors in the amount of $3,217,000.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tully, to award the ARPA Water System Generators bids, schedules 1 through 12, 14 through 25, and approving the upgrade?
Substitute.
Substitute, schedules 12.02A, 14.02A to Dupla Chain Contractors LLC. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Passes unanimously by those present. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll get you that form this afternoon for the notice of motion.
Thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Spidey to return. Item 10, consider and ta, excuse me, item 11, receive financial reports. Court, we have today our monthly Justice of the Peace County and District Courts financial reports. These will be on viewing, available to the public to view after court and county clerk's office. Item number 12 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet, which we have none. Item 13, consider and take action on submitted contracts, which there are none. Item 14 is consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits, have none. Item 15 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, which there are none. And item 16 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have this for year 2024 in the amount of $455,608.44.
Commissioner Spidey, questions?
I have no questions, just a comment. There was a couple of journal entries that would need to be done, but she took care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $455,680.44 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spidey, to approve the bills in the amount of $455,680.44 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 17, consider and take action on submitted plaits?
No plaits.
Thank you. Item 18 is open and consider bids, which we have none. Item 19 is consider and take action to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 10:35. All those in favor of the motion? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.